Okay, I want to ask everybody to please give us your attention. Meeting number seventeen has just been called to order on September 2nd, 2014 at 5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen.
Fleming.
Here.
McCambell.
Here.
Scott.
Shockley.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
First, we have a certificate of recognition. This is for a forty years of service in the streets and sewer maintenance department. That's a long time, and we want to honor Kenneth Hillier tonight. I have a certificate that says, "A certificate of recognition and grateful recognition of forty years of dedicated service to the city of Burlington. As of September 3rd, 2014, we hereby present Kenneth Hillier with this certificate of recognition." Jim Furno, City Manager. Ken. What can we say to you besides the fact that you're old? We appreciate you, forty years. We'd love for you to come in and have some words, but thank you for your service.
Thank you.
So I want to say thanks to Mama.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting up with me for forty years while you were putting up with us.
Could you pose with him?
Thanks, sir.
Would you pose for a picture?
Absolutely. I'll break it. Have some words, please.
It's just been a pledge of word for the city. I want it to be.
Yeah, so the people at home can see it too.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to do two more years. I'll be sixty-two, and that's enough in forty-two, so I figured that'd be enough.
Is that you saying that, or Mama, or are you both on the same page on that?
And she's wanting to travel after I retire, not when it's snowing, we're not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Again, Ken, thank you for your dedicated service. We've been blessed to have an employee like you. That's a tribute.
I need to go and get some sleep now. I gotta go back and work.
Go out and get some sleep, my friend. Nice to meet you, Mama.
I'm sure you got a day. Don't worry about it.
Who is that guy in the back, man? Okay. At this time, we have two proclamations. The first one is Workforce Development Professionals.
Okay. Whereas the economic development of every region in our country and the ability of our businesses and industries to compete in the global economy are more than ever before dependent on the availability and quality of a skilled workforce, and whereas the complexity and fast-paced change in our economy and labor markets puts new demands on individuals and employers at all levels, and whereas job seekers need the assistance of knowledgeable and dedicated professionals to facilitate the process by which our workforce identifies, prepares for, obtains, and maintains employment and self-sufficiency, and whereas employers depend on similar levels of professional services to help them recruit and retain a competitive workforce and continually upgrade the skill sets of those incumbent employees. And now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, hereby join with the National Association of Workforce Development Professionals in designating the month of September as Workforce Development Professionals Month to honor all those individuals in all the workforce development organizations and partnerships who play such a vital role in our economy. Signed and sealed the second day of September, 2014, Shane A. McCambell, Mayor.
Debbie Downe.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Please do.
I'd like to thank the City Council and all of our community members in Region 16, where we serve, Henry Lee, Lewis, and Des Moines Commons. We've partnered with education, business, economic development, and many community agencies to try to leverage resources and prepare our workforce so that we can retain the workers we have, upskill those workers, and also to bring new workers into the workforce. I'd like to, I've sent each one of you a personal invitation to an elected official's reception at our open house, September fifteenth, at one o'clock, and I'm hoping that at that time, we have a tour of the center. There are so many things that we offer at the center that people are not aware of, and we have a huge dollar amount of federal dollars to work with training individuals to meet those needs of employers and to try to fill those jobs that we have on our worksite every day. There's over eight hundred jobs right now that we can't find workers to fill, and so we need to educate our communities better on what resources we have, get people into the Workforce Center, and then also try to bring the community together to leverage resources and plan for our future. So again, I invite you to the Workforce Center on Roosevelt Avenue, September fifteenth, at one o'clock, and hopefully we'll see you there. And thank you so much for the proclamation.
Thank you very much. You're doing a heck of a job, and you've got to leave here to go do some more work, so.
Yes, I am, so thank you.
All righty, thank you. All right. Next, we have National Library Card Sign-up Month.
Yes. Whereas the library card is the most important school supply of all, and libraries are an essential service for the nation's children, and whereas public libraries throughout this nation bridge the digital divide by providing a full range of information and services to learners of all ages and offering free access to important educational resources for all types of learners, and whereas the Burlington Public Library creates opportunities for people of all ages to connect to other people, learn about the world around them, and imagine the futures before them, and whereas the Burlington Library is committed to lifelong education, early literacy, and student support, technology access, and digital literacy, and community engagement, and customer service, and whereas a free library card is the smartest card you can own, and now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, hereby proclaim September as Library Card Sign-Up Month in Burlington, and all eligible residents are encouraged to sign up for a card at your library. Signed and sealed the second day of September, 2014, Shane A. McCambell, Mayor.
Rhonda Freeman.
Thank you so much for taking the time tonight with this proclamation. It's always nice to come in September and remind people of the value of having a library card. The American Library Association has been observing National Library Card Sign-Up Month since nineteen eighty-seven, and each year at this time, it's the beginning of the new school year, so it's a good time to remind people that having a library card is an important part of helping people in their education, whether they're little ones starting school or they're adults who are just continuing to be lifelong learners. So I appreciate you giving me this moment tonight to remind people of that, and I encourage people to come down and learn about the services that we have, whether it's traditional checkout of materials or online resources that we have available, classes that we offer, all those different ways to help learn. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
We have a fantastic librarian. Her husband's got a bad attitude, but I'll tell you what, Rhonda? We do, we appreciate you. You, it's funny, sometimes when I watch her talk about the library stuff, she gets all lit up and everything, you know? We appreciate that. We appreciate that. Okay. First on the agenda tonight is a consent agenda. All items listed under Item One Consent Agenda, having been discussed or considered to be routine by the City Council, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda. It will be considered separately. Tonight, on the consent agenda, we have finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims. We have beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have three resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving the twenty-eight E agreement between the City of Burlington and the City of Mount Pleasant to provide mutual aid for significant emergencies. The third is a resolution authorizing the removal of traffic signals of the placement and the placement of stop signs at Third and Jefferson Streets, Fourth and Jefferson Streets, and Fifth and Jefferson Streets, as provided in Chapter seventy-one of the Burlington City Code. We have three public hearings set for September fifteenth. The first is a consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Harmony Bible Church for encroachment into City Right-of-Way at nine oh six Maple Street, Burlington, Iowa. The second is a consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter fifty-six point oh one, one A, fifty-six point oh one two, and fifty-six point oh one five, curfew of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Burlington, Iowa. The third one is a consideration of an ordinance repealing Chapter one thirty-one, closing out sales of the Burlington Municipal Code. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have one of those removed from the consent agenda? Council, I would like to have number two.
Okay. Was that all of them?
You vote.
Then I have a motion to approve all listed items under Item One Consent Agenda except Resolution Number Two.
Second.
Kathleen.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Shockley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
I just have it. Okay. First, the first hearing is this statement, let me read it from the, this is the time set for a hearing in consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Huckleberry Holdings LLC and Wine Guard Realty Company for encroachment into City Right-of-Way at three thousand one Wine Guard Drive, Burlington, Iowa. Publication's been made in the Hawkeyes prescribed by law. Those four against can be heard at this time. ET?
All right. Huckleberry Holdings and Wine Guard Company recently completed a survey of their land that noted all the structures and items within their property and within the Great River subdivision. A few items were noted to be outside of the private property on City Right-of-Way, primarily light poles and a couple or a few directional signs. Also, a couple corners of some side, or parking lots were a foot or two outside of the property line, and have sought an encroachment agreement to allow those to remain as long as they're used, and our encroachment agreements state if they're removed, then they would have to reapply to place anything in their place, but within the packet and on the map shown here are a few of the highlighted areas, primarily light poles adjacent to some parking areas. Those do serve dual purpose on the streets as well as the parking area, and they do have some directional signs. This is kind of a complex area, a multi-tenant area that directs individuals to their proper location. So it is on the backside of the area, the Casino and the Fun City areas are locally known, again, primarily light poles and some directional signage within that area. But this encroachment would allow those to remain as they are.
Any comments or questions from the audience? See none? Counsel?
No. I think I asked you, Eric, but you didn't see anything, there's nothing on this that's out of the norm. It's just fairly routine.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion to close.
Second. Kathleen.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Shockley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Have a resolution approving a permanent encroachment agreement with Huckleberry Holdings LLC and Wine Guard Realty Company for encroachment into City Right-of-Way of two thousand, or thirty oh one Wine Guard Drive, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Kathleen.
Flebby.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Shockley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
I just have it. Okay. Ordinances.
I have a motion for final adoption of an ordinance amending Section seventeen point seven five point one zero four District Signage Regulation of Title seventeen, Development Program, and the zoning code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second. What do you have to, what do you have to add to that, anything?
No changes from the previous two readings. This just allows institutional uses to have a sign up to twelve feet in height as long as it's a hundred feet away from adjacent property. It doesn't change the allowed sign area, just the sign height.
Any comments, questions, or concerns from the audience? I see none. It's an exciting crowd tonight.
And we'll be later.
Killing me already. All right, counsel?
I have nothing.
Okay.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Shockley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
I just have it.
Do you have a motion for the final adoption of an ordinance rezoning the property located east of Osborne Street between Franklin Street and Mount Pleasant Street from M one Light Industrial to an R three two-family residential zoning district?
Second. Okay. ET, do you need to add anything else to that?
No changes again, just rezoning a property to be allowed to be used as residential at Osborne, Brooks Franklin area, and making some existing residential uses conforming to the zoning map.
Are there any questions or concerns in regards to, in regards to this from the audience? Okay. See none? Counsel, do you guys have any comments on this at all?
No. Easy, man.
Okay, let's roll.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Shockley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
I just have it.
I have a motion for final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter one sixty-two Fire Prevention Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Chief.
Okay, I guess I'll give you a quick rundown of the rules that we've proposed again. Again, most of the rules come right out of the twenty-twelve International Fire Code is what we adopted here last year. We accepted the recreational fires and open burning section to put in the exceptions for leaf burning, and doing this, basically, we're adding in a lot of that language that's already in the fire code, but we're going to have, recreational fires will be allowed with no permits, as long as they're following the rules. They'll have to be in a manufactured fire pit, outdoor fireplace, something protected by stone or concrete. Have to be at least fifteen feet from any structure. Fires are limited in size, three feet in diameter, two feet high. Can only burn clean, dry wood, lumber, or stuff that you buy at the store that's made for fireplace, fireplace logs, and the fires will be limited to between the hours of eleven AM and one AM. And then, so that's the recreational burning, then I just, there's a couple other changes in there. Has to be attended by an adult, which is a change from before, and then, and this, it also changes, the authority to put the fire out rests with any firefighter and any police officer, so wouldn't have to necessarily be me going out there and saying, "This is not allowed for health reasons," or whatever reason there is for putting a fire out, so this opened up that authority a little bit.
Any questions that you guys have from the chief?
No, I think I feel like I've covered all my questions.
Thank you, chief. Is there anybody from the audience, except for Dave, that would like to have, that would like to say something in regards to this stuff? Yes, sir?
My name is Jeremy McCoy.
Can I, can I have you come to the?
Sorry. Hi, my name is Jeremy McCoy. I've.
I just need you to, I'm sorry. I need you to, when you come to the front, I need you to state your name and then your address.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Jeremy McCoy, twenty-nine twenty-one West Avenue.
Okay.
I recently moved here, two years ago, from over by a tumble, Bloomfield, Iowa area.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. My whole life, I've always been able to have a campfire in my backyard, be it for my kids, whatever. When I moved to Burlington, I was very surprised that you couldn't burn sticks, stuff that's fallen from your trees, decent size, not talking a bonfire. When I heard that, you know, you can't burn, I found it ironic that you can have a wood-burning boiler in your backyard, a wood-burning fireplace in your house, but you can't have a fire in your backyard to joy through kids, have smores, hot dogs, whatever. I think it's a very good place for not just families to congregate, but neighborhoods to come together, have your neighbors come over, get to know them.
Oh, that was good.
I just find it very ironic that you can't, so I just wanted to come down. Never been to a city council meeting before, just to voice some opinions.
You don't know me.
Dave?
Don't know Dave. I've got three ash trees in my yard. That would save me a considerable amount of money if I could cut them up in small pieces and burn them in my firing in the backyard. I live on a one-income family, and I support my two daughters and my wife, so that'd save me a bunch of money to cut them down myself, let alone to have someone haul them away at additional cost, so I guess that's all I really got to say.
What's your first name again?
Jeremy.
Jeremy. Thanks for coming down. Dave, I want to remove you here in about five minutes.
John Dunlop.
Well, come on, then, come on.
Mr. French?
No.
Gentlemen, you go first.
Well, I'll break him here. I'm gonna wait until after the meeting.
Counsel members, Mayor, my name is Joel Vanyan. I live at nineteen twenty-four Vought, and I have since nineteen seventy-five. When I have a fire in my backyard in a authorized container, probably with food available, based on the old law, if we had food, we were good to go, what I have becomes a neighborhood watch, something that really needs to be done. Most of you probably don't know where Vought Street is in Burlington, Iowa.
I do. But a lot of people don't.
And the police and the fire don't come out there very often, and we have maintained our neighborhood nicely for many years. I hope that, on a complaint-driven ordinance, that the officers can explain to you what the difference is between a complaint and a complainer. I hope that the police officers, when they get the call, and they've been doing it for years, and they've been doing a fine job, I used to do it when I was a Burlington police officer. We'd go out and talk to the neighbors, we'd sit down with them, we'd listen to their complaint, we'd go talk to the person and find out if we had a genuine one, going to fight, complain. If we had a problem, we took care of it. Doesn't have to be a slap to anybody, just, I'm, and Mr. Fleming, I'm not sure where I fall in the senior category. I'm not a real senior, senior. I'm not a junior, senior, but I am a senior, and so I am here to support this. I believe it's a good thing fires have been business ideas for years, cowboys, cavemen, campfires, Boy Scouts, I think it's needed. I'm done.
I'm gonna.
I was not. I did not. Talk to anybody else.
Dave, Dave. Okay, but no, point taken, point taken. Is there anybody else, is there anybody here that is against, that is against the ordinance? Mr. French?
Good day.
Is that, is that correct, Mr. French?
Yeah. Hi, Mark French of six oh one Harrison. I was wondering if I could just ask a couple questions to get some clarification. I've heard talk about the provision for people that have physical difficulties with wood smoke. First, I'm curious when someone would call in with a complaint, whether it's that person's responsibility to identify the source of the fire, or? Okay. And when someone responds to a call, would it be the discretion of the city official to determine whether it is a real nuisance or go by the word of the person calling? Okay. Well, I hope the council would realize that we all have a different physical response to smoke in the air and toxins in the air. What some people may not have a problem with does cause discomfort to other people, and to others still, it could have real medical issues, and so I'm a bit concerned that it be left to the discretion of the city official as to whether it really was a nuisance or And I don't wish to rain on anyone's parade. I've never, never complained about my neighbor's smoke, and my concerns about physical discomfort are not coming from my unrealized imagination, but they come from my own personal experience. I don't want to be against what people, what people of good faith are for. I don't want to rain on anyone's parade, so I'll just finish my comments by telling you what I am for, what I do support. I do support citizens building recreational fires in the many locations that are provided to them in our public parks, where there's plenty of open space for the smoke to dissipate rather than in close proximity to many neighbors. I do support placing public health and clean air above the convenience of some citizens. I do support the ability to breathe in clean air without needing to be a complainer or seeking remedy for things that cause physical discomfort, and I thank you for your time, and please excuse me, and I apologize, I need to head to another appointment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Shalom, Mayor, Counsel. I'd like to apologize to the mayor. I've been a little harsh at times to him, not being not provoked, but I've.
You mentioned your name and your address.
Oh, sorry, Becky. Dave Meyer, six oh five Edge. And I, you know, I brought up before about the bubble being over Burlington, we're all polluters. None of us in this room would be here if our ancestors didn't like fires, and, you know, we wouldn't be sitting here right now because they'd been dead, frozen to death. I'm for recreational fires. I disagree with Mark. I just met the man, he personally introduced himself, he's invited to my house to a fire, and he's going to come. You know, good people disagree, and I don't have any, you know, I feel for anybody who has a breathing problem. I have family members that do, they have COPDs, now they have machines, you know, air purifiers, you know, air conditioners and things they didn't have back in the day. But my grandma, well, I ain't going to forget, was ninety years old, kicked me in the butt, I'm sorry, if I don't say something, she is for this, and, you know, she grew up with no electricity or nothing, and they had to have a fire to live and a kerosene lantern for their light, and, you know, outdoor bathrooms, which if, or sewer separation, we might have to go back to that, but hey, I'm for fires, and I don't want to, you know, I think it's going to pass, so I don't want to push anymore, but I do have a few other things that some gentlemen have come to me and approached me. One was what Mark said, you know, people deserve to breathe, I'm going to put you on the spot, Shane, so don't take it personal.
Never, go ahead.
All right? I do believe people should have the right to breathe clean air. We have thousands of trains full of coal. I don't know if you've ever heard of black lung or not, thousands that go through this town at thirty and fifty miles an hour, letting that coal dust float everywhere, and, you know, I've got rid of my gas weed eater, and I've got rid of my gas blower, I have an electric one now, and I'm willing to make change, and I think that you, as mayor, can make change on these things, and, you know, I ain't staying overnight, but you can easily go to electric weed eaters, electric blowers, electric mowers, you know, to stop some of this pollution, putting covers over these trains going thirty, fifty miles an hour. Only God knows the impact that they're really doing to us. You know, I wish I could have some white blanket there or some machine to collect it as they're going by, or, you know, Burlington, the city, citizens to breathe this crap. You know, and we're all polluters. Anybody that says they ain't, vent your water heater and your furnace in your home, and I don't want you to do that because I don't want you to die, or your car. You know, I'm a polluter. I drive a Chevy truck, and it pollutes. I drive a boat motor, it pollutes. You know, I heat with wood almost every day, you know, so we're all polluters, but people have the right to breathe right, and I think that, you know, West Burlington, Ottenwell, other cities do it, and it brings the community together, it's bringing me and my neighbors other cities do it, and it brings the community together, it's bringing me and my neighbor together. He's coming over now, he's, I've lived there thirty years, and he's never come over. So I hope you vote yes for this. God bless you.
God bless you. Is there anybody else from the audience that would care to touch on this, a point that we haven't addressed tonight? Okay, council?
I guess I did receive one call in favor of this this afternoon, so I just wanted...
I received several.
I have too, received several calls in favor.
This week's been more in favor than against.
Yes. I have to say that I, I would agree, I have received more in favor than against. I, I still feel the same way, though, that I did, though the numbers were lower, it just seems like the people that I talked to, they just, they, they feel like nobody's hearing their voice, and I want to represent them tonight in my vote. Not that I, I think everybody for the fires have made great points, and I, I think it's a great way to bring families together, but I, I would much rather at least not just jump right in, I would feel a lot more comfortable if we at least reevaluated it after ninety days, but that's just my own personal, personal viewpoint, but I, I hope this, I hope this does bring some families and communities together, or neighborhoods together.
I'm glad we're doing some things that we become a community of, I, I can and I want to do things versus criminalizing and, you know, taking some simple pleasures of life away, so...
Okay. Any other comments, council? All right, let's take a vote.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
No.
Scott?
Aye.
Shockley?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
I have a motion for final adoption of an ordinance amending section thirty-one point oh one, creation, composition of chapter thirty-one, Riverfront Advisory Committee of the Burlington Municipal Code, continued from the August eighteenth, twenty-fourteen city council meeting.
Now...
There's a little note here, this is, all we do is vote, is that right?
We discuss it.
Okay.
You need to discuss it.
We just had three people here, I think.
Okay, this is the beginning of the, of the last meeting. What, point guard?
Yeah, this was continued from the previous meeting. No changes from the discussion from the previous meetings that we have held on this. The main reason for the change that's being talked in here would be to allow representation on this committee from non-residents. Currently, non-residents are not allowed on here, this would allow non-residents of Burlington to be on the committee, but they could not be a majority. So same as what you've had for consideration.
Okay. Any questions from the audience or comments on this specific topic? I see none. Let's take a vote. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
No.
Scott?
Go.
Shockley?
No.
Anderson?
Aye.
She wins.
Wow. Okay, excellent on that. I mean...
I have a resolution approving administrative fees for parking violations of the city of Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Who's, who's bringing that one?
I guess I was, wasn't thinking about Stephanie not being here. This was discussed at the work session, this would be a fee for those parking violations that we have to send to the Iowa offset program or to a collection agency. This would be an administrative fee on top of the regular fee, those, it is not a change to the regular fee structure. This would have an administrative fee with Iowa offset of seven dollars, flat fee, administrative fee when we go through a collection of five dollars per ticket.
This is to help offset our costs of collecting...
This offsets our costs for going through these processes.
And it's only on those, again, that have, that violated, yeah, right. Is there anybody from the audience that had a comment in regards to the fees? I see none. Counsel? I think it's, I think they're well within our rights. No comments? Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Shockley?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to establish fire department response fees.
I need a second.
Second.
Do you have, do you have any questions about the fees?
I just want to give a quick, quick tab dance, I'm gonna give them...
Okay, all right. The, the three fees that are proposed are the motor vehicle fire fees, so if we responded to a car fire and we put the fire out, we pulled the hose off the truck and put out a fire, there'd be a, a fee for that. Motor vehicle accidents, that's if there's an identified responsible party. I think everybody knows we go on a lot of car accidents, I'd say responsible party, a lot of times it's, I'd say the irresponsible party, but somebody at fault of the accident, that's who would, who would get the, the fee. If, if there's no responsible party, then we wouldn't issue a, a fee there. The grass and brush fires, that's by the hour, and that's if there's more than one resource needed, so if one guy or gal can go out in a pickup and it's a small brush fire, just put it out real quick and, and leave, there would be no fee for that, so if it's something where we're taking a brush truck and a tanker, and a lot of man, personnel will go out there and put the fire, then yes, there would be a, a fee for that.
But how, who gets charged for that, the property owner?
The property owners.
In the case of the one that you responded to on Agency Street, some kids were down in the woods playing with matches and, and started a fire, and the property owner would have been charged for that even though they weren't his kids?
I, I don't know, I really, I don't think so, no.
Because our, isn't it set up? That's a good question.
Yeah, and normally that's the kind of stuff that, you know, truthfully, when I wrote this, I'm more thinking outside of the city of Burlington, because that's where we get the grass fires that take up a lot of time. Normally, the in-town stuff, it's not, it's not a big deal, because we don't have large open spaces and CRP. A lot of the ones that we go to, it is the, it is the property owner that started the fire, thinking, you know, I can take care of this myself, it's not gonna be a big deal, and then it gets out of hand. That's, nor, normally, and that's really what I'm aimed at here, is the ones that we go out and spend a lot of time in town. I'm trying to think, did that one on Agency, I'm not familiar with that call, but I know we've had calls like that in the past where kids have started fires, but normally that's, we spend more time trying to figure out who started it than putting out the fire, and I don't think it would require a lot of resources.
I guess what's getting at is, if you can identify the person that started the fire, they would be the...
Well, they wouldn't necessarily get a fee, they would get charged, I mean, criminally, they'd get a ticket.
I should say, they wouldn't be charged a fee if it, if someone else were identified.
Like if it was arson, yeah, no, uh-uh, no.
Or somebody throwing a cigarette out a window and starting a fire, and...
No.
Along the property, the, the property owner wouldn't be charged for that.
No.
Any other questions on that?
Just the audience?
Yep, there were none. Oh, let me double check, did I, was there anybody from the audience that wanted to comment on this? Did I answer? Okay. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Shockley?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for CDBG Downtown Facade Improvement Project.
Second.
This is a awarding contract to Chicken Dan's Construction on Fort Madison, who had the bid in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine. This was greater than what the estimated amounts were for construction. We are working, our, Mark Fisher with Klingner is working on looking at the costs and getting those reduced, meeting with property owners on coming up with an amount that will meet the needs of the property owner while still accomplishing the goals of the project. The grant was for five hundred thousand dollars, the owners were to contribute thirty percent based on their, their cost. Anything over that, their initial estimate, and that cost is up to them to cover that amount. The city's contribution was sixty thousand dollars towards the senior center, improving the facade on that project. Mark may be able to talk a little bit more on the details of the project, what we're looking to do now, doing some engineering on the projects, meeting with the property owners and the contractor on that. He might have a few more details on that.
Eric, it doesn't say in here, but I assume that's a not-to-exceed bid. I think that's a firm, a firm bid, isn't it, at that price?
Yeah.
It doesn't really say that you're gonna value engineer it back in there, which is a, I don't want to be on, you know, I don't want everybody to be on the hook for it, so...
Yeah, no, Mark Fisher, twenty-four Cascade, and I'm with Klingner and Associates. Yeah, the, the bid is a fixed fee, price. You can make changes to that contract sum through a change order process, either additive or deductive, so that's the process we're going through right now, met with the, the contractor, meeting with some of the subcontractors and all the property owners to discuss ways to value engineer the costs down, as Eric said, while keeping the, the grant's scope as transformative as it's supposed to be, so...
How has the response been, or have you met with some of the building owners? And, I mean, how's the response been up to this point?
I would say it's been very positive, you know, obviously, little concern about the prices, but we've identified over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work that could be done at a later time, or could be reduced from the scope, without sacrificing the, the impact that the grant work will have on the project. We've also identified some areas where the property owner might want to take an additional responsibility and do that added work at a hundred percent their own match.
And then in the city's case, the seniors, the center?
Mm-hmm.
Have you been able to address those issues where it appears that were over?
Yes, we, we've still got some work to do there, but I have estimates that have reduced that cost down to about sixty-three thousand dollars right now, so, and we've just met today to discuss some other options to bring that down further to the sixty thousand dollar thing, budget estimate.
So long as, so long as they know we're firm on that, that cap on that sixty thousand for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Good job, Mark.
Any comments about the facade project from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Freddie Star, five seventeen South Seventh Street, Burlington, Iowa. I guess I missed out on quite a bit, I guess it's something been going on for a few years. I believe I talked a little bit to Eric today, yeah, so I'd just like to sit down, if you just explain this a little bit to me, if you would. Five hundred some thousand, what is it, five million dollars? Is that, am I not right?
For the facade project?
Five hundred thousand dollar grant.
Yeah, okay. Would you explain that a little bit to me, where this, how this going, how the, who's the contractor, and all of that, if you don't mind, if you got a little time? Because I missed out on a whole lot, I think I was going on, I don't know, I missed, I don't know. Before I made comment, I know, I don't want to get into something...
This has been a process that's been going on since two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, started application in twenty-eleven.
We had applied for doing a, some work on Jefferson Street back in probably two thousand and eleven, we were awarded a CDBG grant for five hundred thousand dollars. With that, the property owner had had a match of about two hundred and fifty thousand for a local commit on that. The city had a responsibility to, to have a portion in this project, which was doing the community center, with an estimated cost, when those numbers were being done originally, about sixty thousand dollars of improvements.
Senior Citizen Center.
Senior Citizen Center.
Well, for those that...
As this moves on, the, the, the cost did come in higher than what were originally budgeted, and you'll see that reflected in here. We have a sole source contractor on the project, which is what we're looking to award the contract to. Any difference from the original estimated cost is on the responsibility of the individual building owners along Jefferson Street for that core area that was part of the, the project's scope. And you'll see, some of them will take on additional costs, and others will reduce the scope of their work to get it down. Again, the city's responsibility on the project is about sixty thousand dollars, and the other, the, the main source of funding in here is the five hundred thousand dollars from the state, which is, it's federal funds through the state.
And you might explain, that money can only be, Steve Frevert might, that CDBG grant is not open for anything.
Yes, is this, is that money came through, was that originally flood money that had been done, and this was one of the rounds?
This isn't flood money, this is, it's HUD money.
Can you give your name and address?
Oh, sorry, Steve Frevert with Downtown Partners. It's through the Downtown Revitalization Fund of Community Development Block Grant Money, so it's federal funds, and it takes care of, one of the, the reasons that CDBG grants are, are given is to alleviate slum and blight, and the downtown area is, is classified as slum and blight by the city, and so this application, I think, we started discussions in two thousand and eleven, the application was made, and, and I think the grant award in two thousand and twelve. And as Mark said, it needs to be transformative, we can't spread a half million dollar grant over forty-six blocks of downtown and expect you to see much of a difference, they want to see it in a very tight geographic area. So we talked to property owners along three blocks of Jefferson for three hundred, four hundred, and five hundred blocks. Originally, the six hundred block as well, but unfortunately, the property owners there that were interested were ineligible because the rear of their property is in the flood zone.
So they narrowed it down a little bit for you there.
Yeah, Eric maybe is a better...
Downtown's in the urban renewal area, the neighborhood development, urban renewal area, and the, specifically on Jefferson Street, we had to identify slum and blight conditions, vacant housing, deteriorated conditions, or vacant structures deteriorated conditions for this area and for the structures that were applied for. So that was, part of the application process was identifying those for this project.
And it's really a balancing act, because when we apply for the money, we're, we know what, they're not gonna award a grant if we have really great-looking buildings, so for instance, something like four sixteen Jefferson, that's meant as church loft, it's all redone, there's, there's nothing slum or blight about that. On the other hand, they're not gonna award a grant money to vacant properties that have been deteriorating for a long time and no, have no plans for change. They want their money invested where it's gonna make the most difference, we kind of had to hit that middle. Properties that definitely need some help, but that they're, there's also a plan to, to put them into use or keep them in use.
Now, let me, let me make, clarify, have you clarify this. We couldn't just pick any area and do it, there's still, there's still guidelines that, that, could you expand on that?
It needs to be, I believe, and Eric can correct me if I'm wrong, that it needs to, at least for, for the slum and blight part, it needs to be a defined area, and that, this is just one portion of CDBG funding for the, the community revitalization funding, because it could also be used for public infrastructure improvements, things like that. But this, they draw a line around, you know, the area that includes the downtown, and, and I should mention Downtown Partners is, is not the applicant, we assisted, assisted with the application, but we're not the applicant, we're not the recipient, we're not the pass-through, we're the cheerleader in this. And as Mark said, we've been meeting together with some of the property owners, I'm very pleased with their response, they know that their buildings need work, but they also know that investing in them now is an investment in the future, so it's going pretty well.
And this is not like five hundred thousand that comes to the city, and the city gets to choose what to do, this is something that had to, was a competitive application within the state of Iowa.
Yeah, the, the state started this, the Downtown Revitalization Fund through CDBG a few years ago, we were, got in about the, maybe second or third year of that, and early on, before many people knew how to use it, the, the matches, the local match was as low as ten percent, now it's, I'm hearing it's over fifty or sixty percent. It's gotten very competitive, so I'm glad we got in at that thirty percent match. And to address... And to address your question, we can actually, and I know everybody in the room is thrilled to hear this, we could apply for this again, because it's been so much fun the first go around. But we're going to try to finish this one first.
But it's fairly, it's fairly specific oriented. You can't, you had to have a plan for a specific area and how you're going to bring it back. It wasn't something where you were just scattered throwing the money at it and saying, do what you want to do with it.
Exactly right, yeah. And, and the other component is a really complicated process. Their component is that the city actually holds an easement on the facades of these properties, I believe, for seven years. So if any changes are to occur to the facades, they'll have to get the city's permission. And that's because community development block grant dollars cannot directly benefit a private property owner.
Any other comments or questions for Steve?
This is a little bit complicated to me, but I'm just one person, one vote, one voice. Kind of like just a certain section of people get a, get a blessing out of all the people in Burlington and all the downtown or whatever. What happens with the, the buildings get fixed up? Maybe the owners put in, what, 30% or whatever? What happens even with us, rest, rest of us taxpayers that, you know, we pay tax in on that too? Why come we can't get a cut on our tax or something? I mean landlords, I'm speaking as a landlord too, so, you know, I'm just saying. I know there's been some time going on, but I'm just addressing this as of now, because there's some things I was just missed out on, so I'm saying my say now. I mean, what's wrong with that? I mean, I pay city tax, state tax, federal tax, and this is just so much money going into just a certain group.
It's actually not a group, the money, the money that we're investing in is, is the, we're putting the city's portion into the senior citizens' building. There's, there's always going to be, there's never ever going to be, well, let me say not never ever, but there's always going to be programs or dollars that are available for specific, for specific things. We don't always have to take advantage of them, and we don't always do. But when it seems like it's, it's more of a positive than a negative, and we're not taking the hit, that's where we make the judgment call. But it wasn't about saying that we're going to chill favoritism to a certain area. This was just something that came up that was available, and it fit the criteria for this specific area. So we, we had talked about it for quite a while, and we decided to move forward on it. And as far as I knew, nobody had anything negative to say, nobody came, well, I know for a fact, nobody came and said anything negative about it, but it's not a, it's not about taking money and just saying, hey, we're going to take this group and we're going to do something for them. It doesn't come down to that, but there's, there's always going to be. Next year, who knows that there might be some money that opens up for, for a specific project that the state says, okay, well, we'll give you money for this, or we've got a pool of money, and it can be used for this. That's, those things go on all the time.
No, I thought it was more than one building though. I thought it said blocks. This is not in the blocks?
No, it's more, it's more than one building that is, that's taking advantage of this money.
That's what I was talking about, yeah.
The city's portion is 60,000, the 500,000 is federal, is that right, Steve, federal money? So that would be money that people pay, if you're wondering where the money, I would say like on your federal taxes. And if, if the city, if people in the city of Burlington don't apply for it, then it would go to another community. I mean, it's not just a group of people, it's just that we got something here in our community that came from federal dollars.
Yes, but you say, we gave 60, you say?
60,000, and that is for the senior center to, that was our match. The match from the city, the rest of the match is from the building owners.
But I mean, it was all in the same package, I mean, however it was written up or whatever, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Yeah, it had to be written up that way. The city had to match and.
There was still a portion of what I've chipped in too.
Yeah, and that would even be if it was in St. Louis or in Des Moines. I mean, that's federal money, so, you know, you could look at it that way, no matter where it went in the nation. That, if those grants are available through the federal government, it could have gone anywhere. So it's good that some of it came to Burlington.
Basically, she said they're still going to, the, the federal government is still going to pickpocket us regardless. They're going to take whatever they say they're going to take, and they're going to say, all right, we've got these programs. And that's always, that's always the thing, it's like, well, where's all this money coming from? Or how come it's not affecting me, or how come I'm not getting a reduction? They're going to spend this money regardless if we, if we say yes, we'll participate or not. They're going to spend that money. It's still coming out of your taxes, out of all of us that pay. The, the thing is, is that we have to decide, is this program going to benefit our city? Is it going to, is it going to help our city? And, you know, we weigh out the variables, but they're going to spend that money. If they're going to have a program, it's not like they contact us, we don't even have a say in it. We just find out they've got a program, this money's available, and then we look to see if we've got an area of our city or whatever that we can affect it with. But that money's going to get spent. That money's going to get taken, and it's going to get, there's just no, there's nothing I can do about that.
Right, it's possible that it could have been spreaded, though it could have, but it was chosen to, to complete this project.
No, no, no.
That's what made the money work, because it was a specific project.
Yeah, this wasn't even a project that we had in line. This, this money created this project.
It was specifically for a certain targeted type of project. It had to be spent here. And that's part of the difficulties that we have with a lot of the federal programs. They don't allow us a lot of flexibility. Now, we do use federal funds in other programs. I don't know if we've used CDBG for rehab housing, Eric. So we do, and that gets used throughout the community.
Yeah, there's always a targeted neighborhood with it, but it's spread throughout the community.
Did we just do CDBG funds for the targeted neighborhood?
Osborne area.
On the Osborne area. We use NSP funding, Neighborhood Stabilization Plans, which are other federal funds to do housing spread throughout the community. So those are, those are some of the federal programs that allow us to be a little bit more flexible in how we use it and disperse it throughout the town.
Okay.
This is just one that was really focused and targeted, and they said that this is the kind of project that you're going to have to use it for if you're going to get money from us.
Okay. Now, now, do you have the contractor, our contractors? Who are they?
Chicken Dance.
Chicken Dance Construction.
And where are they from?
Fort Madison.
They're not from Burlington though, okay. They're from Fort Madison? And the representatives here? Oh, shit.
Chicken Dance Construction.
Ah, all right. Well, now, I want to ask this. I'm concerned, I see Louis Bowden back there. I'm concerned, what about the concerning the jobs of African Americans? Will there be any African Americans working on these jobs in these positions? Since this is federal money?
That's, that's not going to be on the whoever does the work.
And they're, they're required to meet all hiring, all federal hiring requirements. They're, they are not required to hire a specified number of African Americans or any other race, but they certainly are required to hit all the equal employment requirements, and they're held accountable on those things.
Don't they, they're held Davis Bacon on federal funds?
For wages.
Yeah, so I mean, there are requirements at the federal level, but that doesn't come through the city. And I think we just heard from the workforce development person that there's over 800 jobs that she cannot fill at this time, out of the workforce center.
800 jobs?
800.
That's a staggering number.
That's a lot of jobs.
Yes, it is.
They need a lot of people. So folks that aren't working need to go to the workforce center and apply for jobs, because she just stood right up there within the last hour and said how many openings they had to fill.
Okay.
And I just heard today from the fertilizer plant that they're having to bring people in because they don't have enough people to fill the openings that they have. So the opportunities are available. I've heard it from two places today, vast opportunities. So hopefully, folks will be taking advantage of those.
Good money.
All right, all right, thank you. Answered my question, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel, any other comments? All right, let's push it to the vote.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Yep.
Scott?
Aye.
Shockley?
Aye.
Anderson?
Epstein.
We have a resolution approving a 2080 agreement between the city of Burlington and the city of Mount Pleasant to provide mutual aid for significant emergencies.
Second.
Apparently, I thought we had beat this up, but apparently somebody missed a meeting. So can you explain just briefly what this means and that we're not selling Burlington?
It's just the standard mutual aid agreement, and I'm not sure how many we have, 20 or 30. And they come up for review every so often, and Kathleen sends me the notice that, hey, this contract is up for review or renewal. A lot of them, like even this one, if we didn't do anything, we still have one that's in effect until one of us says, we don't want any part of it. But this is a new, that's, well, they, we record them with the state, now they're 2080. I'm not sure exactly what difference that makes, but they want all mutual aid agreements to be registered with the state, which Kathleen and I do after they're signed. Our, the new city attorney, he wrote up this agreement. Basically, it's a template, we just switch out the names of the cities. But if we ever had a, for Mount Pleasant especially, it'd have to probably be a natural disaster of some type where we'd call people from that far away. Or if we needed a specialized piece of equipment, like they have an aerial truck, if we needed several aerial trucks, a ladder truck, that's something that we could call them to come and give us a hand.
So are you going to be changing any of the ways that the fire department does business or anything like that?
No.
Okay, thank you. That's all I, I just wanted to make sure that that was said, so I don't get, get beat up later on tonight.
All right.
Okay, any other comments? Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Shockley?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, if there is somebody from the audience that has a comment in regards to something that we haven't covered tonight, this is your opportunity.
Can't live with myself if I don't say something. Shalom, Dave Meyer, 605 Hedge. Five points. One is for the police and the firefighters. I don't know who does their HMOs or their chiropractors or whatever, but when they're driving all these shifts and they're lifting these hoses and everything, I was told by a certain doctor I seen that a firefighter, a police officer on his own had to go to this doctor for an adjustment because the regular chiropractors weren't available. And I don't want to say the doctor's name because I didn't, he didn't know I was going to approach it. I know him, he would say it was okay, but until I talked to him about it. But when they're driving all these hours and they're sitting in these cars, and the firefighters too, now I don't know, Jim, are you the one that takes care of their insurance or their HMOs or whatever?
Actually, the only spot where we get involved in medical is if there is a work-related injury.
It may have been a work-related injury, the way he talked to me about it.
If that's the way it is, they are required to report that, and hopefully, if there was one, they did report it.
Well, a chiropractor wasn't available. He couldn't get in. That's the whole point. He couldn't get in to see this chiropractor, so he had to pay on his own, which I thought was crazy that, you know, it wasn't covered. And he's, he lives here, this chiropractor in Burlington, now his business is in West Burlington, but he lives here, and I just wanted to see if there's something we could do for the police officers and the firefighters if the doctor isn't available to go to a different doctor. Can you?
Yeah.
Okay. I still got four of the points, that's just one.
Yeah. If it's traditional business hours, they're sent to Business Health out at the hospital. That's where they would go to get their initial evaluation, and then they're sent somewhere from there. That's on-the-job injuries only. And then if they're not available, they can go to the emergency room if it's deemed necessary, if nobody else is available, and strictly just to get evaluated and where they would get sent to.
But he couldn't get into another chiropractor because the right, original chiropractor wasn't?
If it was an on-the-job injury, there's the, okay, hear me out, please. If it's an on-the-job injury, they're required to report that to us. And then we fill out a form, take care of that, and then, like I said, they're sent to Business Health.
It runs, it runs through their department, and then it runs up through HR, and, I mean, but they do have a requirement to report it, and we do take care of all, all the expenses that are associated with it.
Yeah.
We have a standard process that they follow on that.
Yeah, the only thing in his scenario that could have went astray is they didn't report it to us. At which time, it would have really got confusing then. If they go somewhere for an on-the-job injury and it hasn't been reported to us, you can see the conflict or the problem.
Right, right, right. Thanks, Steve.
Made me forget, give me a sec. Oh, okay, here's one of the second ones. I brought up to you about, about the electric weed eaters, mowers and blowers, you know, and I know we can't stop all pollution, but now, or isn't it you, Shane? You know, don't get me wrong, that tells Jim to put it on the agenda for a vote. And the same with these coal cars that are going through here. I mean, you know, or do you want time to pray about it, think about it? On, you know, how, how do a citizen get it put on the agenda? Or are you Lisa, look me in the eye and say, no, we ain't going to put it on there. Lisa, give me some peace of mind, or?
Anybody, anybody can.
Any one of them. See, now I didn't know. See, I just thought it had to come from you. And, you know, and that's, and I know I ain't asking overnight, because I know, you know, I'm just asking that, you know, if certain steps, because I have feelings where people have breathing problems too. You know, that, like I said, I got electric weed eater now, electric blower, and I'll eat it on the mower next year. I bought a new gas mower, but I'll eat it and buy an electric one. But, and maybe we just need to see if some citizens are listening, they get ahold of their council members and stuff. Maybe it's something that if all the public wants, you know, because to me, it don't matter, but the ones of voices that aren't, don't feel they're being heard, you know, I have family members that have COPD. You know, they still go by fires, but, you know, they have issues. And darn it, I know I got three more things and I'm going to be mad at myself because I got to leave town. Well, I guess that's it, because I can't remember. Comment?
I really don't know how to even address that. I would think that if, if the feds weren't catching it and the state wasn't catching it by the time it hit the city of Burlington.
You don't think that called us? In Philadelphia, I was told that black lung doctors, not to interrupt you, I'm sorry. I'm a passionate person. I don't mean to be offensive.
Is that people working in the mines, though?
No.
Or is that just from the cars?
From the cars that aren't covered. Yeah, people working in the mines get the black lung. But you're telling me that them trains traveling 30, 50 miles an hour through Burlington, the wind's blowing at 15, 25 miles an hour, there's no dust going? That we ain't seeing with our naked eyes? No, I know it is. I, there ain't nobody going to tell me that you can't see, except in winter time, your water heater smoke or your furnace coming out your chimneys. But those trains coming through this town, when the wind's blowing and they're going 30, 50 miles an hour, how many trains? He gave me an example. He told me, he lives near one, there's 100 cars per train. He goes, there's thousands of these coal cars, you know? So do we call Burlington Northern and say, hey, you need to look into this? You know, is this dust just blowing and everybody's breathing this in?
I would start with the governor.
Okay, I can go anywhere.
There's nothing, I mean, there's nothing that I, you know, as far as I know.
You can't make an ordinance to say anything traveling through Burlington's covered up? Like with the tarp, like at the dump? They go, hey, you go out to the dump, you got to cover it with a tarp.
That's not going to happen. I mean, I could see the railroad saying.
Why ain't it going to happen?
What, where they're going to, where they're going to say, hey, we're about to hit Burlington city limits and we're going to cover it?
They're going to cover it, or you're going to get a class action lawsuit against them.
They'll just go around Burlington.
Well, good, then that new train bridge they just built can be tore down.
I'll tell you what, man, it's a little bit more complicated than that, but I don't know, that's something I never.
So here, we couldn't do anything at the, at this level? That's what you're saying?
No.
I'm saying I don't even know where to start on that. I, this was, you know, I've never, I've never looked into that or even thought about it.
I didn't either. I can't take the, it was brought to me by a businessman that he was doing some work for me, and he says, we were talking about the fire pits and stuff, and he goes, well, why don't you bring up this? And I thought, I never thought about it. I sit at the train when it's going by, my wind is down, I'm like, hey. You know, these, somebody could get a big lawsuit here, so maybe some lawyers look into it. All right, happy birthday, Becky.
Oh, thank you.
God bless y'all.
Just stole my thunder. All righty. Anybody else from the audience? Okay. Poygar, comments?
Well, first, a couple of you took a tour today.
Yes.
How did that go?
Actually, really good. I was going to, I was going to mention that. We, we took a tour to the fertilizer plant. We, we took a tour to, uh, the fertilizer plant. Um, it was, uh, it was quite impressive. Uh, I was kind of, I was kind of blown away. It's a little city, uh, right down there on the premises, or right on the site, and they've got just about anything you would need down there, from power to water treatment to, they're, it's pretty impressive.
The rest of you have a chance, opportunity to sign up for a tour, uh, next week on Friday. Um, and at that time, there will, the governor will be speaking as well down in, um, Fort Madison. So for those, those council members, you do have a formal invitation for that. Um, a couple of things that are going on right now, well, actually, follow up on something that Tim had brought up a, a couple of months back in regards to the old armory and whether the guard would, would be willing to consider demoing it. We think, uh, fire chief had gone out and had some conversations with folks in regards to that, and the official answer that came back after being run through their system was no.
No surprise.
And, and part of that, I think the, the justification or reasoning that they had behind that is a, a private contractor could do that and they don't want to do something in the municipal, out in the, out, out in the public that the private sector can do and displace private sector work.
You don't, you don't mind if I take that on as a challenge?
I certainly don't mind. Um, but that's, through our processes, that's where we came to.
Okay.
Uh, you will be getting some notices over the next few days on a couple of different economic development projects. Uh, the Economic Development Committee will be considering a request for some funding on one of those projects on Thursday. Um, another one would, is gonna be considered by, uh, West Burlington at their council meeting tomorrow night and would involve some corridor work along agency that we'd be partnering with if that's going to, if that were to come to fruition. Uh, so just to know, a heads up, there will, there is very likely to be a, uh, two different funding requests come through the city, uh, one of them for a minor dollar amount, uh, on the, that would go through the Economic Development Fund. And the other one is a larger project, but it's a huge benefit to the whole area if we can get some, uh, be partnering on a, a grant that does some major improvements along Agency Street.
It needs it. Yeah, it needs it.
As, uh, a couple of other things, a reminder, the Paint-a-thon is going on this week. I think there are 19 homes that are involved in that. Uh, the city crew will be, will have, we have several people who've volunteered to work on Thursday and, uh, a few who will then probably get to follow up on Friday to finish up whatever doesn't get done. Um, I know that our, uh, there were several other groups that are involved. Rotary gets to clean one or do one as well this week. Um, Cobbco had received seven proposals for health insurance brokers and we asked for those as a group, as a group, we decided that we wanted for them to come in and make more formal presentations and allow, allow us to get some additional information from. All of a sudden, we're really good proposals and it's really hard to limit it, but you have to whittle down. And, uh, we will be doing those, uh, next week. We'll have formal presentations on Thursday and Friday and, uh, hopefully we'll get to a spot where we're able to select, get to where we are looking to either renew with Two Rivers in that role or if we will be looking at, at a new provider that we'll be, have recommended. Um, and the other thing that I mentioned would be, uh, as we've talked a lot about flooding along the riverfront, um, one of the funding sources that's out there is, uh, there's a sales tax fund source that's out, that's, that is available, but you need to have a project, all of your projects identified as part of the request for, for funding. Um, well, to have projects identified with good solid cost estimates, you need an engineering design done and engineer, formal cost estimates put with it. Uh, we had a meeting, what, a week ago? Last Thursday was, we had eight contracts?
Six out of seven.
Six out of seven were in, so we had six firms who came in, expressed a, at least an interest in being involved in this project. We're trying to really move this fast, on a fast track. Uh, we've asked that those proposals, those who are interested in partnering with us, submit proposals by the 15th?
10th.
10th. And then our goal will be the week of the 17th to try to, if, select, uh, probably a couple of those to come in and make more formal presentations. Um, and if we can get things going, we would like to, uh, at the work session at the end of the month, if we're able to get down to one engineering firm, have a special meeting at the front end of that to select, uh, a primary firm. And we're doing this on a fairly fast-track basis and we do have a reason behind it. We're asking them to submit proposals to do the design work and give us back concepts with cost estimates within about 60 days. Uh, and the reason for that, if we can get things submitted, uh, by the end of the year and get in the queue, uh, it makes a difference on what the base year is for our funding and the level of funding that is available. So there's a big incentive to get it done yet this year as opposed to waiting another year. Um, would like to have, if there's an interest, one or two council members as a part of this process, 'cause, I mean, we, we need you to be involved and know what's going on and, and have some buy-in on what's going on. Uh, don't need an answer today, but fairly quickly, one or two of you that are willing to volunteer and be a part of that, it would be great.
I'd do that. Be good up to the mayor, but I'd be happy to if you... I mean, I'm willing to.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Well, that's, if, if that's the two, that's fine, but make sure that you're all comfortable with how that works out. Um, but just want to make sure that you have an understanding of what's going on and we, as the design work goes on, we need to make sure that we have input from you all and we need to make sure that we get some of the ideas that we're getting out there, uh, put out in front of the public too during this process. And I think that covers what I had.
All right. Bubba? Birthday girl?
Uh, I just want to say a big thank you to Alliant Energy. Um, I, I want to just throw this out there that if you do, if you recognize a, a light, a straight light that is out, uh, or that is constantly flashing and, and won't stay lit, um, you can, uh, make a phone call to Alliant Energy, they will replace that. And I'll tell you what, most of the time they do it in about a day's time, so appreciate, appreciate that. I won't, I won't throw any names out there, I don't want anybody to get a big hit, but I do appreciate Alliant Energy. Also, just want to say again, happy birthday to, uh, councilman, councilwoman, uh, she's 29 again. And, uh, just wanted to give another shout out real quick, just to Kenneth Hillier for, uh, 40 years of, of service. I've, I've heard a lot of, uh, compliments, uh, good worker he is and stuff like that and, and that's, uh, we're gonna miss him in two years, so I'm glad we still got him for two, but I just wanted to give another shout out to Kenneth for, uh, for 40 years of, uh, dedicated service.
Mr. Scott?
Sorry. That was good.
Keep doing that, man. Dance around here. It's rolling.
I hope everybody got a chance to read yesterday's paper. Um, there's, uh, there, there's a lot of momentum going right now for, uh, the Burlington reserves and, uh, I think you read where, uh, Greater Burlington has contributed $10,000 with a 100% vote on that. And we're hoping to hear back from Crime Stoppers tonight on another 5,000. And Chief, I don't know if you've gotten a tally, what's come across your desk yet?
Yes, thousand-ish.
Thousand-ish. That's, that's pretty good. I got another 100 bucks to add to tonight, a guy dropped off to me, so, um, we've got, uh, we've got some plans in the works, but ultimately, we want to be done by November 1st and, uh, have enough funding in place to fund 10 officers. Uh, Chief thinks he's gonna take, uh, two to three years to take it all, 10 of them traded in place and, and, uh, I think it's gonna make a world of difference for him and his troops down there and, and it's, it's gonna be good for the community and, and it's gonna give us a potentially, uh, resource for, for future full-time officers. Um, I, I just can't see any bad, uh, coming of it, so I'm, I'm glad the chief brought it up and I hope everybody supports. We'll jump on the bandwagons, support it. If you get a chance to talk to anybody about some funds here and there, please do so. And, uh, I think the council members that have contributed personally already too. All right, it's all of that.
Becky Jackson?
I have a couple of things. Uh, it's too late to do anything about it now, 'cause we're past the last holiday, but if we can remember that one of the nicest things that Burlington has is our riverfront and be a little more attentive to the ramps, docks and that.